It is Monday, October 5th, 2020. As authorized by Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purpose of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any agenda item herein. The City of Rowlett reserves the right to reconvene recess or realign the regular session or call the executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Due to the public health emergency and to conform with social distancing requirements, the city council meetings will be held via teleconferencing. The public can view the cities, you can view these live on the city's website or via RTN 16. If you'd like to listen to a meeting live, you can call 833-568-8864 and enter meeting number 1609972150. To provide comment for the meeting, please send an email to citizeninput@rowlett.com by 3:30 PM the day of the meeting. And Laura, did we have any citizen comment for this meeting?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I will call to order the city council meeting, and we do have a quorum. And Matt's on the phone in the meeting, but he won't be able to use his video. So we have six on video. Is that right? One, two, three, four, five. Why am I not counting six?
You have six.
Okay. I don't know why I'm having trouble. Oh, there he is. Hey, Blake. I was missing you. And then the chair of CIAB is... Is that Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff is on. I saw his... Uh-oh.
Jeff is having some connection issues, and he keeps getting kicked out of Zoom.
Yeah. No. I'm on now.
Okay.
Just on muted.
Okay, you're the chair. Is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Okay. All those that are on... Everybody silence their phone now that the mayor has silenced yours. You got that? All those on CIAB, if you also show your video, if at all possible, because you have to... In public meetings, you have to show the video to have a quorum. And Jeff, do you want to call your meeting to order?
Okay. Good. It's been a little past 5:30. October 5th. And we have a quorum. We're now beginning the meeting for Community Investment Advisory Bureau Advisory Board.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Okay.
You want to introduce? I'm Tammy Daganashian, Mayor. Let's go around council real quick and introduce yourself. Whitney, you're my first one.
Hi, I'm Whitney Lanning. I am the council liaison to the board.
Brownie.
I'm Brownie Sherrill.
Pam.
Go on mute, Pam.
Raise your hand, Pam. Pam Bell, deputy mayor pro tem. Martha?
Martha Bell.
Blake?
Hey there.
Blake.
And then Matt. Just say hi, Matt.
Hi, guys. Sorry about there on video.
And then Jeff, have you let your CIAB board introduce themselves or you can introduce them, your choice?
I'll go through who I see here. My name's Jeff Sheldon, chair. Tiffany Batiste.
Hi.
Hi. Brian Gallardi.
I'm here.
Victor Cardoso. Victor, you're on mute.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay. Micah Rabelais.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Mike.
Yvonne Newkirk. Yvonne Newkirk.
You raise your hand.
Okay. Mike Vols. Okay. So we've got some members that are new. This is their first meeting.
You've got Noel on, too.
Noel Woodworth.
Oh, Woodroff. Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I missed him. Sorry.
Hey, Noel.
How are you this evening?
Very well, thank you. Thank you for joining.
So I think we have a complete board here, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you so much. And thank you so much to the Community Investment Advisory Board. I assume you've been pretty active so far, and it's about to get very, very active. And it's a very important role for our citizens and for our community to analyze all of our capital improvement needs and make tough, tough decisions for recommendations to council to figure out how we're going to move forward with our next bond package and capital improvement program. So from on behalf of me and the city and the city council, thank you so much for everything you have done and are about to do. It's incredibly important role. So with that, I think... Are we following my agenda, Brian?
Yes, Mayor. I had some introductory comments, and we do have a few slides tonight.
Okay.
But it was primarily just to kind of get the juices going and kind of lay down some of the groundwork for the dialogue we're going to have this evening.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read both of my items into record, item two, which is review bonding capacity estimate, and item three, which is discuss council's philosophy regarding a proposed 2021 bond package. So are you going to take it, Brian, first?
Yes, Mayor, I am. First off, team, I do want to thank you for being here tonight. As you know, the Community Investment Advisory Board performs an invaluable service to our community in identifying, assessing, and ultimately recommending projects for the upcoming bond election. Tonight, we will discuss the current bonding capacity for the next two bond cycles. While there are funds available, our community's needs truly exceed the current capacity. Too much work remains to establish an exact number tonight. What we would like to see is a dialogue with the city council and the CIAB that will lead to a consensus for the CIAB to develop maybe two to three scenarios with which to prioritize our capital improvement needs. So unless I hear differently from the mayor or from Jeff, I thought I would start with a few slides before we kind of turn it over for dialogue.
Sounds good to me, Brian.
All right. Thank you. Laura, if you'll pull up the presentation. And like magic, there it is. Thank you, Laura.
Hello. Buttons work. And if you're not talking, go ahead and mute so that we don't get any background noise, please, everybody.
All right. Go to the second slide, Laura. So I thought what I would do is just... Because I knew there were some new members tonight on the CIAB, I thought I would start with just one slide just to kind of talk a little bit about the history, about what we're doing. So about 2014, the city realized they would have an opportunity to fund capital improvements and future bond elections due to both declining debt and future growth. So in 2015, the city passed a relatively minor $25 million bond election. Remember, this is when we're coming out of the Great Recession. And it was without a tax increase at that time, and it was primarily just due to declining debt. There was about a 10-year period that the city didn't issue any bonds, and so that was what created that gap because most of our capital improvement bonds are financed over about 20 years. In 2018, we followed it with a $60 million bond election, and it used both growth and declining debt, growth in property tax value and declining debt. So our strategy has been based on trying to maintain the debt portion of the tax rate at around 22 to 23 cents of the total tax rate and then packaging our bond elections in three-year cycles. So the challenge for 2021 is that if we stay on this strategy, the real question is, what is the right answer? And you can see from the charts what we were kind of talking about. If you look at the black and yellow area on the top chart, you can see how that was going to decline over a period of time. And that's what's freeing up capacity within our bond financing to issue debt. And then we've also had an increase in our taxable value, which is providing some additional growth. And so the strategy behind it at the time, and this was some time ago, was in that we could layer bond elections every three years. So that was kind of hypothetical, but that was the philosophy that generated this cycle that we're on. Next slide. So in 2018, we did have a bond election. It was successful. It was $20 million. You can see on the bottom left-hand corner, most of it went to streets, and then we have about $9 million of it went to parks. And then the public safety, which was primarily to build Fire Station Number Two and Trady Road. And you can see that they were pretty well... Pretty strong yes votes for those particular projects. Next slide. So this is the slide that I really wanted us to get into today. And I'll let Wendy kind of talk about this slide, but it kind of shows you what we see as our capacity for the next two bond cycles. So Wendy, would you mind?
Hi, council and board. Yes, we had Hilltop Securities run our bond capacity. Ran it today. So we have some more revised numbers based on the certified values that we got from Dallas County and Rockwell County for the 2020 tax year. And what she ran today is to keep our... If we keep our debt rate the same without any debt increase, we would be able to issue approximately $40 million, $36 and some change in this upcoming May 2021 election. She also calculated... Did you... I also want to let you know that this is a very conservative estimate that we're using a 0% assessed value growth for next year just because we don't know what's going to happen with values based on the COVID pandemic. So we're just being conservative. So that gives... We could have... That's why we're kind of rounding it. It maybe could go up to 40 on here based on if we have a little bit of assessed value growth next year. But you can kind of see the trend on our assessed value growth that we went from 11.45 in 2019 down to 4.25 growth in 2020. And then because of... I don't know if it was because of COVID or what other economic indicators were part of the play, but 2021, fiscal year 2021, which is the 2020 tax values, dropped down to an increase of 4.3. So we're just trying to be conservative for next year, not knowing the outcome of the pandemic. Talked with Hilltop Securities, and they haven't really heard anything. Otherwise, if they could, you know, give any recommendations that we change that number at this point. But they do feel like that we could issue that $36 to $40 million on the May 2021 election and keep the tax rate the same for those three years, three-year issues.
Thank you, Wendy. And then they also... We had asked them to show us what we potentially could do in the next three-year bond cycle for the purpose of this conversation. And it's about another $60 million there. The one thing that I thought was really important is that they... We asked them to... What would be the amount that we could issue per penny on the tax rate? And for right now, that number is $10 million. So as we start to think that, you know, we could issue, say, $36 million to $40 million really without any kind of an impact on the tax rate, then for every penny after that, you would add another $10 million. So just kind of keeping that in the back of your mind as we kind of go through the discussion. So if we did a six-year bond cycle, you can see that's almost $100 million. And if we continue to stay on the three-year cycle, then it's about 40 in the first year and about 60 in this... Or 40 in the first cycle and then about another 60 in the next cycle. Next slide. So we have some special challenges. And again, this is just flavoring for the discussion. You know, there will be a need for public safety facilities down in Sapphire Bay. Our current facilities are outdated. I think most of you that have been to City Hall or to any of our other facilities know that. You know, we... There for a long time, the city was very stingy about what we spent on our current facilities. But, you know, recognizing... We just had a facilities assessment done. You guys will get a chance to see that in November. But our city council has heard the results from our consultant. And there... It would take several bond cycles if we assume we continue to do the three-year cycles to be able to get, you know, the facilities that we would need to build for our ultimate build-out. So that's going to take time. And so we may have to spend money on existing facilities just simply because replacing those facilities may be further out in the future. So that's a real significant challenge we have. Growth, you know, inordinate growth comes with high demand. And I know most of you probably have seen this, but in 2019, the Census Bureau said we were the eighth fastest-growing city in the United States. We know that we can see it everywhere we go in town. You see the construction. So we know that we're growing, and with that comes with demand for services. Bonding capacity, so our capital investment needs are exceeding the amount that freed up. I know from the letter I saw from Jeff Sheldon earlier, you know, you recognize that. Just 44 projects, I think, that was presented so far was about $139 million. You start adding in facilities to that. It's a big number. And then, as Wendy mentioned, you know, the economic impact of COVID-19 is still unknown. So, you know, there was a pretty significant increase in tax value in January 1. And of course, the real impact from COVID came around March and April and May, and we're still dealing with it today. So it is still possible that we may have an impact going into next year. And when the appraisal districts, Dallas County and Rockwell County, do their reassessment on January 1, 2021, it's possible that those values may be impacted. What we're kind of... What we kind of know about is that there's new construction going on that will be counted in January. But then there's also the chance that some of what has been built or even existing tax values may be impacted. And the problem is, we don't really know yet. And so that's a real challenge for us as well. Next slide. So kind of just some of the goals for tonight that I, as I see it, and just to kind of help with the dialogue, is really is, you know, is to have a discussion between the CIAB and the city council so that we can give guidance to the CIAB on maybe various bond scenarios. And so, you know, one way might be, you know, to pick two or three scenarios that we want the CIAB to work with. You know, maybe it's, you know, 40, 60, 80 million or 50, 70, 500 million, whatever the number would be. And then that way, let them do their work in the next 60 days or so and to prioritize the projects that they see are the most important that we've got to do in the next bond cycle. Also, maybe guidance on city facilities. Have a discussion with how do we include that? Do we include that in the bond election? At least in terms of what the CIAB recommends? Or is it, you know, an amount plus the next facility? And then to provide kind of a due date that the council would like the, you know, the CIAB to form its final recommendations. We have a schedule which I'll go over. And, you know, just working backward from... If we're going to have a May election, working backward from the date that council would have to approve an ordinance to call the election, and then working backwards from there, we have a suggestion on at least, you know, the week, maybe a week in December when that would be due. Next slide. So here is that address. So tonight, we're on October 5th. You know, the CIAB needs time to kind of do its work over the next, like I said, 60, maybe 75 days. What we want to suggest to the CIAB is that as a part of maybe your next meeting on November 2nd, staff can kind of present some of the same information we presented to council on the facilities assessment that we did. And then maybe the week of December 14th, 18th, somewhere in that range, we would get final recommendations. In January, the council would start working on the bond election. And then by February 2nd, if we did it on a regular meeting or it would have to be a special meeting on or before February 12th in order to approve the ordinance calling from the election. I think it's 78 days before the election. And May 1 is the election this year if we do this. One of the other things council will have to decide in January, or at least by the meeting in February, is whether or not to push the election off. And right now, if we're going to make the May election, we have to assume that we will do it and see where COVID takes us between now and then. That might have been the last slide. I know there weren't many. It was primarily just to kind of... Yep, that was it. So we could pull back up any of the numbers. We're prepared to discuss. And then, you know, at this point, Mayor, we're ready to kind of let you guys start talking.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brian. And I guess where I'd like to start is, Jeff, if this is appropriate... Jeff, can you kind of tell us where you're at on this process from a board standpoint?
Okay. I hope everyone has received the memo that I had written to, one, the council and also to the membership of the board. This basically gives us the status of what we have on our table right now. And that is that I think Brian has mentioned that we have something like 44 projects currently coming from three separate departments. That is Public Safety, Parks and Rec, and Public Works. It totals $139 million. And if we have, let's say, $40 million to invest in the city with bonding for a May election... Let's just say that in those three groups, you divide $39 million. You give $13 million to each. That would be one way to do it. However, that really doesn't satisfy the needs of the city very well because we have a lot of other criteria other than just their application. What we have before us, Mayor, is some of the scenarios. I think we would be interested in seeing about actually how to apply the $40 million. At this point, we usually begin to think about the different criteria for evaluating a project. And we have historically used basically 10. Now, I did not conclude this, except generally in the memos. So let me read the 10. One is transportation, how to really make it work in the city. Public safety, number two. Number three is existing infrastructure. I think there would be a lot of alley work there. Sometimes it's been some other things with Public Works. Revitalization and vital growth. Quality of life. The big item there in quality of life is our environment. What includes trails. External funding. External funding includes Dallas County, any federal funding, state of Texas, and whether we're jointly working with some other county like Rockwall or the city of Rockwall. Now, one of the things that we have challenges here with is the impact on the operational budget. I think this falls within the context of what we want to talk about and how it... Whether or not you guys want to do it in 2021. By it, I mean do the funding for the $40 million. So you want to postpone it? Or how you'd like to handle the scenarios? The ninth criteria is the timing and location because it doesn't necessarily all need to be spent in the first year as Brian has judiciously in the past managed to share the dollars that we get from the bonding every year. It is, for example, it was approved in '18, and the bond money was used in '18, and then '19, and then '20. The last item is any special consideration. That is, if there's some value that the public or citizens see. But at this point, we have not received any public input. So at the... Mayor, at this point, that's the criteria that we use in order to judge each project. And it's worked very well in the past. And that's what we will take up in November depending upon the scenarios that you provide to us today or that we talk about today.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
That's all I've got to say at this point.
Really appreciate that, Jeff and CIAB. Based on, you know, that discussion right there, let me go a couple different directions. One is council be thinking about, if you have any discussion or request on that prioritization list. And while you're thinking about that, can someone address... You know, in the past, we've had a tool that the citizens were able to access to give their public input on priorities and requests, et cetera. What tool is out there right now, Jeff? And how is that being advertised for our public?
For public input?
Yes.
So far as I know, it's not being advertised as such. We just provide, the same as the council, an opportunity for public input.
Well, there was a tool we used three years ago, Martha.
Yeah, it was a web page that they could go to. I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn, but... There was actually a web applet that IT developed for the last committee where you could go in and select something that was important to you as a citizen and then describe why that was important. And that feedback went into the committee.
Right.
I, you know, I think that's incredibly important that we started using our community in that area. So who runs with that?
I agree, Tammy. And there was also an opportunity for citizens to provide their own ideas, not just to select a menu that CIAB had presented, but there was the opportunity for them to give their own input.
Yeah, that tool did both things. Brian, go ahead, sorry.
If I could interject, that the link to that tool is still out there on the CIAB page, and it is still active. I don't know if anyone submitted anything. To date, I don't think we have advertised to anyone that it's out there still.
If that's the case, then we might just put together something to give to Denise and have her push it out.
Have to be a campaign and we'll have to make re-advertise and market that. I I may be speaking out of turn here, but my recollection was that it was not that onerous to um to get it posted and use it. Um so I would think that we could do that uh pretty doggone quickly.
When is your next CIAB meeting? I'm sorry if you've said that already.
November second.
Okay, so it probably needs to be, thank you, Laura, the voice from beyond. It probably needs to be done with before November second.
Yes.
Right? Who's who's got this? Uh Whitney, Brian, Jeff, Laura?
Uh I'll work with Brian to get it pushed in the right direction.
But Laura just said she's got it, so.
Okay, well.
Include Laura.
I'll 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 do the round.
Okay, Laura, you're the staff liaison for CIAB. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Okay, so uh put that on those plates. Um so council, any comments, discussion about what Jeff went over in regards to priorities?
Well, I do have a a comment, Mayor. Um and they may have gone through this exercise. Um but on the previous two um bond offerings that we did, um the committee was faced, you know, very much with what you guys are looking at. Where you have um a few hundred million dollars worth of need. And um forty to sixty million. As a matter of fact, the first one that we did, uh Whitney and I were both on that uh committee and we only had twenty-five million. And uh we had about a hundred and fifty million uh dollars worth of needs presented to us as well. So I I feel your um your pain in trying to prioritize these projects. But one thing that we did that I felt was very helpful to us was to have the department heads that had presented all of these needs to you um to let you know what their maybe number one or number two top priorities are that they feel like absolutely, if there's any way to do those, that they should be included. And uh and that helped us very much because, uh you know, we we have the citizens' perspective. But having that department heads' input on uh what is critical for the city from their perspective really helped us uh drill down to uh what we wanted to include in those bonds. So I just wanted to say that if you haven't gone through that exercise yet.
Martha, to answer your question with regard to prioritization, uh the last two meetings that we've had and met with the various departments. We've asked them to supply the list of projects that they have and to put it in their prioritization. So that the top of the list is their number one project. As for example, in Parks and Rec, it's Hereford Park.
That would probably be city councils, too.
You also served on those two committees and so uh you're well familiar with the process that we took. But uh you know, I just thought it would be worth recapping in this meeting to make sure that that had brought forward.
If you do want to see the list of the projects uh from each department, Laura has um has the uh the list for each of the various, for the three departments, and she could share that with you if you want. Correct, Laura?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I think that would be good, just so um we're we're working with some pre-information, so we have it too. All right, council, any other comments uh regarding what Jeff read as far as the ten uh considerations? Or or CIAB, anybody? Anybody else have anything on that topic, Whitney?
I did I did just want to say uh that the ranking criteria um is a very, very important piece of this process. Um and uh Laura had just sent that out to council so that we have a a copy of that. We can review that. But it's it's been a well-honed process over the past two bond issues. Uh but I feel confident that if they follow that process, that we'll come out with extremely well-done project or or list of of priorities uh that they'll be able to come back to council with. So um I absolutely support the use of that criteria process. It's very fair um and uh even-handed. So it's a a great job, Jeff, and I'm 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 happy to say that uh we're gonna use that process again this year.
Thank you.
Any other council comments about that specific item? Or CIAB, I'm sorry. I'm so used to just holding council meetings. I'm not seeing anybody else raise their hand. I'm not looking at the electronic hands being raised, by the way, just so you know. On my screen right now.
I will have a comment with regard to communicating to the public or citizens. If we can have that.
Just gonna go, Jeff, thank you.
Yeah, if we can have the uh the Facebook or if there's another site. And then each one of us, because I can think of maybe two or three different email lists and other Facebook uh pages that I belong to. Uh we can recommend to the citizens that if they do have a comment on existing projects or if they have one of their own that they'd like to see us consider, that they do so via that 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 site. Does it make sense? I mean, each one of us uh probably has a a list of folks that you uh communicate with. And uh maybe you could lead them by the nose if you wanted.
Yeah, absolutely. Denise will run point on that, whatever y'all decide to, you know, publish. But then all of us need to go out there and and share on all of our different uh sources, absolutely, Jeff.
Correct.
And where I was gonna go with uh public engagement um is just kind of something I want to mention is low hanging. It's not low hanging fruit. It's just something after the decisions are made. Um one of the very, very important um objectives of this Community Investment Advisory Board is not only helping make a recommendation to council on what to uh put in a bond proposal, but to also, once that is those decisions are made, to help facilitate that education and communication to the public as a whole. So we're kind of talking about two different kind of communication things going on right now. One is engaging the public in the decision-making process in the in the research of, you know, po- potential projects process. But then afterwards, helping with the communication ed- education to the public uh to really get them to understand, you know, what the projects are that are on uh the ballot and um, you know, why it would be helpful to support those. So uh that's for down the road, but that's also a goal and objective of the CIAB. So um go ahead, Brian.
Somewhat related question. I was just looking at the form that's out there. And to date, the presentations the CIAB has received have all included some estimate as to the cost of the individual projects. Form, of course, doesn't ask for that. We can't expect our citizens, and that's why I know that. And this is really a question, I guess, for Brian or Laura, whether we can get some support from the city in terms of when those things come in. I guess a uh you know, bottom-of-the-seat kind of ballpark number for what the thing might end up costing. Um my experience in dealing with uh too many demands and too few resources is you tend to fit the puzzle together as best you can try to use up a hundred percent of what you got. And that's hard to do if you don't know what something costs.
Laura, I believe we did that last time, too. Um there you are. Okay, can you?
Getting rid of the sunlight that was blocking, that was causing a problem, sorry.
So when those uh when the input is uh received from the public, those projects are put into a spreadsheet and then provided to staff and the board. And um those um from staff will provide a uh best guesstimate.
Yeah.
So um just to clarify real quick, um so when the CIAB comes forward to council with the final recommendations, uh clarifying that that there will be um several scenarios.
That's what we're gonna talk about now. I was I was saving the hard part of the conversation till now, I guess. I was trying to get that low-hanging fruit conversation done. Um so um Chief Godfrey decided to show his face and then disappear. Um so we've heard from Brian and Wendy that we've got just north of thirty-six million. That's a pretty safe estimate that we can fund over a three-year period. And and that's not saying we can fund thirty-six million in year one, because that's a different calculation. That's saying we can fund one-third, one-third, one-third over year one, two, and three without changing our debt level. And then the next assumption becomes that in re- as a result, does not change our tax rate.
Mayor, that the, yeah, that's that's correct. She's got uh twenty, twenty, and then nineteen point nine. So about, yeah, about twenty, twenty, and twenty roughly.
No, I'm talking about thirty-six million.
I'm sorry, twelve, twelve, and twelve. Yes, it's about one-third a year.
Okay. And um Brian, does that include growth factoring in as far as um, I know you said there was no appraisal increase, but what about uh new development?
So Mayor, what we've what we've tried to do, what we said is this. So, you know, we know we'll have new construction value that will be added. And what we don't know is really what's gonna happen to uh existing values because of this. So what we're what we're re- um I'd say recommending, at least at this stage, is a zero percent growth, net growth next year, one percent after that, and then two percent. So it's pretty conservative going. I I really believe that unless we're in true recession, it should go up, not down.
Okay, uh but my very specific question was on existing values or on new values?
Mayor, this this would be based on the total values that we were using as our estimate as of August twenty-four, when we had our, were having our budget meetings.
So it includes new development?
It it included new development. Well, at that time, it was whatever was on January one of next year. And then what we're presuming is zero growth next year in total. So however the mix of new growth and reassessed value goes, it's a net of zero percent uh growth next year.
Okay, and yeah, those are incredibly conservative.
We're hoping that's conservative. Yes.
That was not my phone this time.
Mine, unfortunately.
Um okay, so um one one thing I think maybe we need to talk about is the facility needs. And council, we just went through a facility assessment and it sounds like CIAB is gonna hear that in November, is what I he- think I heard. Um and, you know, it was, it's a good facilities assessment in regards to identifying all the needs. But what it hasn't done is, you know, figure out some of those next steps, which we talked about when council saw the facilities assessment. And um one of the things I've talked to Brian about is a a city manager and what I've talked to Whitney about recently as as liaison to the CIAB is it really feels to me like city staff needs to come forward with a plan. Um and asking CIAB to do that from a fi- a city facilities standpoint to me seems not the the best first step. What what seems to me to be the best first step is, you know, for uh Brian and and his staff to go, you know, maybe this needs to come first. You know, maybe it's a public safety building. And then maybe uh city hall personnel and HR and accounting can move over to the current police station. Um you know, I it 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 feels to me that there just needs to be a a a laid-out plan over three, six, ten, fifteen years on what to do about s- uh city facilities. And then, you know, that preliminarily per- preliminary plan be presented to council and CIB, CIAB for us to shoot holes in it. So I'll pause there for a minute and see what thoughts are in regards to that from Brian, CIAB, council. Whitney?
So I I support that uh because I don't think, I know based on the last discussion that council had um for the facilities, it was not ready for prime time yet. Uh there were a lot of information gaps that were there that were requested uh to be filled in. And one of them is to have that timeline, proposed timeline from staff about when we think things need to happen and kind of what order that needs to to transpire. And I think that's important uh that we have that before it does go to CIAB. I I don't believe that um we should task this committee with determining what that order is. I think that's a that's a staff and council decision. And then when we get to the point of how do we do this, then we in in invite CIAB in and say, how can we work together to properly fund this through a bond? And how can we coordinate that? Are there pieces that of that bond that we can in the order to make it both things work together? So, you know, the 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 thirty-eight million or thirty-six million dollars uh piece that they're working on plus the facility on the other side have to marry at some point. And so I think that um that's in the future to come, but I don't think we're gonna be ready by November to be able to do that.
Martha, did I see you raise your hand?
Yeah, I I agree with you and Whitney uh that it needs to start with staff. To me, this is no different than having department heads prioritize their needs. Uh no one's gonna know better than Brian and staff uh what the capacity is on the buildings that they work in every day. Um they also know um kind of the life cycle of uh certain facilities. And have we reached a tipping point uh to where we need to think about building something rather than putting more money into maintaining um deteriorating facilities? So I I agree. I think it needs to start with staff, with Brian. Uh and let's just see what we have uh ready in November. Um we we don't have a whole lot of money to work with. And so um, you know, maybe maybe we get to um uh concept or or drawings for uh one, the first facility. I don't know how uh we fund that, but uh I do think it needs to start with Brian and staff and then come to council so that we can give uh CIAB something to work with.
Yeah, and 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 I'm I'm gonna take other comments in a minute, but I just want to throw this out there. You know, we're talking about thirty-six point six million that does not increase the tax rate on a conservative uh calculation. You know, Brian showed a six-year plan and he did that for a reason. Because when we have facility needs as desperately as we currently have them, we can't think in three-year increments. We need to think in three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-year increments. Um and, you know, it's 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 very possible that we go to the voters with potentially a thirty-six million dollar bond for infrastructure, roads, um some parks, some public safety. Um but that we also go to the voters to um, you know, build phase one of of facility needs. And this is what it's gonna cost, and it may increase the tax rate, and the voters get to decide that. So I just want to make sure everybody's thinking that, you know, there is a box and there's a safe box, and then there's a box that needs to be potentially, you know, uh you know, go outside the lines of the box to to do what's right for the community, and the voters will decide that. Um and that's what the way it should be. So um so Whitney, I heard from Whitney and Martha in regards to facilities. Brian, do you want to say anything? Brian Hunter Burke?
Oh, I I saw Brian raise his hand.
Oh, did Brian raise his hand? Brian Galarde, you you go before Brian.
I I just had a question, uh and that is, so we've had some presentations that included discussions of uh fire department needs, buildings, and and police needs and Sapphire Bay stuff. Those are outside of this facilities assessment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Good question.
Uh Mayor, one thing that I was gonna say is uh you're absolutely right. You know, one of the things that we did with the agreement with Brinkley Sargent is that at the point the assessment came forward to council, there's like two other phases that we do with this. Part of which is um, you know, really where those facilities would go. And, you know, do we build in a campus setting? Do we start having conversations about how we combine uh meeting space, for example, so that we don't have to duplicate? So there there's still work to be done. And um and that work will be coming back before council. But yes, we will, we will be pulling that together with Brinkley Sargent's help and get that back in front of you. Um I liked your idea, um you know, is that, you know, once we get uh kind of our hands around that, then um we also present that to the CIAB. But I still think there could be some value at the meeting in November, um at least briefing them on what the assessment, um the facilities assessment came out at to help with the entire scope, um and then come back with some further discussion on specifics.
Yeah, whether it's November or later, I I think y'all can make that decision. I just don't want CIAB to feel like, you know, that that they need to make those decisions right now. If council agrees with that approach. Blake, you you good? Pam? Brownie? Matt, any conversation you want to have?
Yeah, I I I agree with that. Is it even possible to have the plan for the visi- facilities assessment done by when we would have to make a decision on this? Cause I agree.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, I do think that um, you know, we we should have some a pretty strong recommendation on what we think some of the pecking order would be and the general location of where we think those facilities would go. Um I think that, now, what what would happen is, let me let me just say this first. So if we were to keep this into two, three-year cycles like we have now, then you may end up having to budget some. then you may end up having to budget some architecture design dollars in the first election to build a facility in the second election, or you may end up having to do both in one bond cycle. So that, that, that's the part of the discussion that still has to come. Uh, but I think that, you know, based on the council's earlier comments when we, when we heard the totality of the assessment, you know, I don't think anybody can imagine any scenario in which we would try to do all those facilities, you know, um, in a, in a such a short period of time. It's gonna take several bond cycles to be able to, to do those facilities. Because we are talking about our final build-out. I mean, that, you know, we're close enough to be able to see that in the future. Um, and so this isn't where you would build one facility thinking someday in the future you'll build another. Now, this would probably be our final build-out.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. And I was just trying to nail down if we could actually, cause the mayor is correct and I thought that was our next step was actually have a plan and a recommendation from staff of how that would lay out over five, ten, fifteen, twenty years and what would be the recommendation of what we would need to do first. I just wanna make sure that that's something that we will actually have enough information from that we can present to CIAB and council to make some logical decisions um, in the timeframe that we have, knowing when this is gonna have to be decided on.
Yeah, and um, I'm just gonna make an editorial comment here, cause I heard it uh, from Martha and I heard it from Brian. And this is just my stance as one of seven. I am going to be very uh, negative on funding development in one bond and construction in a second bond. Either we can do it or we can't. But I'm not, I'm personally am not gonna support spending a half a million dollars on developing architectural plans in bond one on the hope that, that we don't have another COVID event or whatever twenty twenty-four brings and we can't do the actual build. I, I, I just, I don't wanna get us in that situation.
So I, I, I hear you and I agree. So then what is, and I know you mentioned an idea, but what are we specifically asking uh, the CIAB on how to uh, create this bond?
We're gonna go now.
Okay, cause that was, I was just like, okay, great, but how?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, I wanted to have the facilities discussion so that we keep that separate and apart, right?
Right.
So I'll get there.
My curiosity's pukes.
I'm very linear tonight. I'm trying to go down this path.
And to me, uh, I just wanna make one comment. Uh, I, I do understand your point and it is a, a well-taken point, uh, because we have spent money on architecturals on some things that never came to fruition. And that's very disappointing and uh, it's wasteful. And so I understand where you're coming from on that. Uh, I think that uh, that what I was talking about was not full-blown architecturals for all of this. But I do think that um, that we need to make some decisions and have some idea of locations and the concept of how that's all gonna be laid out. And so uh, so getting those concept drawings uh, to me are could easily be funded in one bond and then the actual architecturals that build a certain facility along with the funding for that facility in a second bond. Uh, I, I just feel like we need uh, we need some ideas about the design of this whole complex, uh, and, and that could be done ahead of time, but uh, ahead of the building, um, and the actual architecturals um, for the facilities.
Well, what does the facilities assessment include, Brian? Under Burke?
Yeah, Ma- Mayor, I'm sorry, what was the question about the facilities assessment?
So what does the facilities assessment include in regards to that?
There's no drawing plan in, in the assessment.
No, remember that there's, they did, they've completed the first three phases, which is get us to an assessment point, the results of the actual analysis. And then the next stage was, you know, um, kinda where would we go? What would be the first facilities? How would we combine those? That really is the next phase. And we're already um, started on that work.
Okay, I, I want a very specific answer on what the facilities assessment includes in regards to schematic plans because
Right. Um, so at this, at this point through phase three, there are no schematic designs on any of them at this time.
So I want a very specific answer on what phase one, two, and three is on the facilities assessment, please. If you can't give it to me off the top of your head, please find it and tell us that sometime in this meeting.
Okay.
But um, okay, alright. So interrupt whenever you want on that, Brian.
Okay, I'm ready, Mayor.
Oh, you're ready?
Yeah.
That's not even interrupting.
Well, I mean, I, I had, I had the presentation up on the facilities assessment. So there were, uh, I say three phases, there were three goals. Uh, one was to analyze current departments and determine future space needs for city hall, police, fire admin, parks, public works, library and court. Obviously, council has seen that. Project staffing needs for ten to twenty years, population growth, council has seen that. Determine building and parking needs for staff and city services, council's seen that. Step four, develop budget options and associated site development exhibits for say a new municipal complex or whatever those um, recommendations would be. And then the fi- fifth um, is to develop budget options and associated develop exhibits say for public safety facility, public works and any other satellite facilities, however we spin that around. That is the next sta- uh, step.
So there is visuals involved in that. So.
There would be, yes, and phases in, in the next two steps, yes.
Because we justified this large facilities assessment that it was gonna take us quite a ways down this path.
Yes.
So that we would have the ability to make decisions on a, you know, facility, you know, phase-by-phase project. So anyway.
And partly all, and, and just, just to say, we're also about three, three to four months behind because of COVID. So we're gonna be playing catch-up this fall.
Yeah, I just, again, I'm not, I personally, I'm just telling y'all, I'm gonna fight hard that we're not spending money on development plans before we have the money to develop it. That's just my personal opinion. Brian Gialdi?
Um, that, that field question for, for Brian. Um, you gotta, somebody have a long road to uh, complete before you're at the point where you've got, as I think of it, the uh, the, the order and the chunks that you need to go through to complete this over the, whatever time it's gonna take. Um, do you have time between now and when we have to call a, a bond election, which is what, February, to complete all of that and get it to CIAB for inclusion and discussion or is?
So Brinkley Sergeant has done, I'm sorry, Brian, my apologies.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Brinkley Sergeant has done, um, has prepared some initial cost estimates, but understand it, it's based on square footage, based on future growth. Um, and at this point, it's not hard, um, architectural design standards, which, you know, could take a year to build by themselves. So this is planning at this point. It's not actual engineering at this point. Um, but you know, I think that there's, there's a couple of scenarios that we will be able to provide um, in this, in this timeframe enough for council to make a decision about which facilities go first. I don't know that we would adopt the plan yet, you know, for a fifteen-year period, but I know that we'll have a proposed plan for that timeframe.
Okay, um, I, I, I guess what I was asking is whether the CIAB is gonna have the opportunity before we come to council in December to actually have seen a timeline of the facilities themselves with the, you know, priority as you guys have, have recommended. Um, and then the size of those uh, cost chunks that are involved. Uh, we, we don't have that much time between now and when our, the schedule we saw earlier said a recommendation to council in December.
So Brian, part, part of what I would suspect is that it would probably be in early December before it comes back to you in that format because what we had talked about, I think it was back in August when we presented this to council, is that we would come back in the October, November timeframe with uh, kind of our next step or our next phase. And so uh, we've gotta flesh that out first before we can get to that, to that point. Um, but I think, you know, maybe shooting for early December so you guys have a chance to look at. It's one of the reasons why I was suggesting that maybe on November second, at least we could share the information from the uh, assessment. So at least you have that as groundwork and then um, and then have a follow-up discussion on that as we get into uh, maybe into December.
Alright, and I guess um, from, from personal experience in the past, this, this merit to you. Um, I understand your concern about having the, if you will, the design drawings and that kind of thing ready to go before you get into the bond, but and quite a number of projects now are done more on a design-as-you-go kind of process, large projects. Um, so I think I'd be willing from the CIAB perspective to work from a concept of, you know, we need a hundred million dollars in facilities and the first twenty million is gonna cover, you know, building A and B. Um, we don't know exactly um, their specific design, but we know who's gonna go and where they're gonna be, that kind of thing. I, I'm willing to work with that level of information in terms of moving forward. Um, you know, given course proper oversight, the process in the, the execution, so.
As am I, Brian. I, I'm just not willing to spend the money until we have the money to build it.
Right, yeah, that, yes, I, I firmly agree with that.
Yeah, alright.
Just a comment, Mayor? I saw the presentation from Brinker Sergeant. Uh, it is complex. And I know they're going, they're scheduled to come back with some finalizing on what the assessment is and uh, I think the CIAB at this point, let me say, would be willing to go ahead with this, the, our evaluation using the criteria for the projects that we have currently. And then after re-viewing the assessment that Brian has suggested that we see in November, we would be able then to be able to make some kind of judgment about what would be worthwhile pursuing in conjunction with the, the council. Because I think the council has this decision to make, uh, not necessarily the CIAB because uh, of the dollars that are involved and exactly how you want to handle the fifteen-year project that you're talking about. So, um.
You know, if, if I were in your shoes, I would think about asking your, your board to view the city council meeting and and not put it on the November agenda yet because you got so many other priorities, but you know, that's just something you guys can think about.
Okay, um.
I mean, you're, you're gonna get the same.
What council meeting, Mayor, are you talking about? Go back to the one that the presentation was?
Yeah, you're gonna get the same presentation that we got, so you could just go view that right now, you know, between now and November and not take that time up in your meeting, but I'm sorry, I'm micromanaging.
And I don't get to ask a ton of questions.
Yeah, that's true. But you can keep emailing me, Brian.
Yeah.
Y'all can decide that, but anyway.
Okay. Uh, if, if we were to view that presentation to the council, I think it's which is a very good idea that each one of the board members of the CIAB do. It remains uh, that Brian has a challenge in front of him with regard to selecting how to move people around and what uh, facilities to be assembled first. Uh, uh, so he has my sympathy in that regard, particularly.
I, I need it, I need it, Jeff.
Particularly when there's so many things that are in play at the present time with the change in technology and the um, the way people are going to be working in the future, uh, transportation. Uh, you mentioned parking for uh, cars and trucks and whatever. Who knows how we're gonna move people around in fifteen years?
Right.
Anyway, that, it's just an aside, which is uh, part of the complexity, I think. Uh, allows us to proceed in a, a more measured way because we will be able to adopt changes as uh, as the facilities are put into place. That's a thought.
So um, good, good thoughts, Jeff, and a, a question. Do you think uh, the facilities whole project falls within the ten criteria we talked about for the other projects or is that something that is?
It's, it's the one that um,
Yeah, I guess my question.
About how it affects the, the city budget, basically. You know, it's the decisions that are made with regard to the city budget and how they're going to spend money.
Okay, so we would apply the ten criteria to those projects as well?
Correct. But that depends upon the information coming from uh, from Brian, I think, more than anything else. As well as our, our going and viewing the, the consultant's uh, initial uh, presentation to the council. I don't know exact, Laura, do you know, have any idea what the date would be for that?
For the facilities presentation?
Yes.
Um, I'll have to look it up and I'll send the board the link.
If you would, please.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, let's move off of facilities unless anybody has one, one or two more comments or? Okay, alright. So to the question Blake keeps getting me to get to, thank you Blake. He was, um, so we, we've, we've heard thirty-six point six for sure. Um, so in the past, what we've kinda done is, is given CIAB, you know, prioritize your list based on thirty-six point six million, prioritize it based on forty-five million uh, and prioritize it based on, you know, fifty million, whatever. Um, and you know, do an allocation of, you know, sixty percent roads and this does not include sewer, cause that's separate stuff. Um, but when sewer is included in a major residential reconstruct, it does include it.
Yes.
Um, um, you know, and you know, giving them guidance like sixty percent roads and infrastructure, twenty percent parks and rec and twenty percent public safety. Um, I think that's the next thing you're asking us to give you some guidance on. Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, so Blake, you want, I'm sorry, Jeff.
If you want to apply percentages like that, otherwise we would just strictly use the ten criteria.
Yeah, it's hard to know. Um, that's, we've used the ten criteria before and then we've come to those allocations. Is that, that's probably one, right?
Yes.
Alright, Blake, you wanna start us on this conversation?
Me, why?
You keep asking us to go there.
Go ahead, go ahead. But I, I think this is a good conversation to have, though.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I do think that, you know, the ultimate decision of how much we ask to go to the voters on is gonna be based on the individual projects and the priority and the needs in our community. Um, so I, I'm not so sure I would wanna go, let's do, you know, sixty, twenty, twenty. I think we need to go priority one through whatever at some funding levels we want you to look at. Yes, no, anybody?
I, my idea would be for uh, CIAB to just come up with a running list based on their rankings. And then uh, when that's presented to council, we'll have by that time, we should have a final number of what we think that, that bond is gonna be. And we just go down that priority list till we get to uh, that number, that magic number and everything above that number gets funded um, as a first cut. And then, of course, council could go in there and, and say, okay, we wanna add this or subtract this um, to make it uh, a little more plausible um, a scenario. Because right now uh, the splits are, uh, just from the preliminary numbers that, that Jeff has given us, it's about seventy-four percent for uh, road, road construction with public works, sixteen percent for parks and recreation and ten percent for public safety. So that's a big difference from what we've done in the past, but I'm not sure that all of those rise to the same level of rankings once that's committee has done that. Because those, those uh, pieces right now are just vetted by staff. The uh, committee hasn't had a chance to look at that at all and rank any of that.
Well, the other thing is, is that um, with facilities, I mean, one facility will take this whole bond uh, and you know, not leave anything for the rest. So how are we going to facilitate that? Um, are we gonna not include facilities in this specific bond? And do like what the mayor mentioned before, which is uh, have a, have a separate bond for a facility? I, I don't know.
Well, the, it'll definitely be a separate bond, whether it's within the forty, thirty-six point six million. We gotta look at this from a, a We gotta look at this from a, a midterm and long term basis.
Yeah.
So, that's a decision for council.
Yeah, and I, and I, I guess I'm saying, I don't think we'll know what that looks like until we get this, the prioritized list from C I A B. And look at the must haves, we may only go down to the first five rather than the first fifteen. Uh, to be able to add into it some facility stuff. Um, but that's a decision that later on we'll have to do after this committee has done their work and done all the rankings.
Yeah, I, I like a great deal of what you said, Whitney, with regard to ranking the projects. Um, so that we could give the council the full ranking and. Because that takes into consideration more than just whether it's streets. Uh, Martha has heard from me before with regard to being able to. Put the entire bonding toward alleys, we could take care of a, a greater percentage of. The alleys that need to be rebuilt and all that would be known well as having the finest alleys in the D F W area. But there's more to the city than simply alleys, and that's the reason for the rankings.
You're gonna get Matt to unmute his microphone here in a minute if you keep.
You, you took words right out of my mouth. I, I really like where, where Whitney's going with that. It makes me, it makes it really hard to make decisions and give directions today when I haven't even seen some of what your rankings are to this point. So I think you just keep going through your process of ranking them on what you, how you've done it in past years and let's see where things wash out.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I don't know if you were here when, uh, I mentioned it earlier. But each of the departments, uh, have been asked to submit their projects ranked. So that number one is at the top. Uh, and, uh, Laura said that she would be able to provide you with, uh, copies from each of the departments. That's public safety, parks and rec, and public works.
And so taking up my mantle is the gaffe fly here. Um, first point of order is that the twenty eighteen breakdown was sixty nine percent roads, fifteen percent parks. Fifteen point eight percent public safety, so whatever we heard a little while ago is pretty, pretty close to where that comes out. Um, the other thing that I, and I've talked about this C I A B before, but I think it's important for council to think about this as well when they get into the discussions. We may well go through and rank these things in order and have them exactly as we think they should be. Um, and in that top priority that uses up the funding that we have, there may be one project that consumes half of the capacity. Uh, and at the same time, there may be ten lesser projects of the same cost that produce a great deal more value to the city. Than that one project. That's common problem in software development and, and fixing. Um, so it's something we need to be cognizant of when we go through this ranking process and start putting together the. You know, the, the pieces of the puzzle, it's not, I think, a linear process, we're gonna have to get the linear. List as a start and then start put together, and I know Jeff, you've talked about this before, how do we measure the value of the project to the community? It's not just the cost of the project.
Right.
We've got those, but in the long term value, we need to, um, measure the, I hate to be, bring out the economist in me. But the utility that we're going to provide to the community, so.
Right.
Absolutely agree with you, Brian, and that, that, that can be things that you all consider and it's certainly, you know, items we consider. Last, the last bond, um, recommendation from C I A B. I think we made one change to it between when it was with C I A B and when it came to council. Um, and it's not because you all didn't consider this other thing. It was very high on your priority list also, you know, so anyway. Um, absolutely agree with that, Brian, what else did you have? I think I cut you off, Brian. Galardi, no, okay.
Yeah, and I agree, and that's why I think it's hard to, it, it's really hard to make a decision, which is why I went back to making sure that we're gonna have time. To get the facility needs assessment done to be able to make these decisions in December and January, because. If facility assessment comes out and says, hey, public safety comes first and it's gonna take us. This to do that, and we're not gonna get to a new city hall for year ten. There's some serious bond money that's gonna have to go into fixing up that building. And so that can change your priorities based on what that facility assessment needs, so. We don't even have all the pieces yet to be able to start to rank these things to make a, a, an informed choice on them.
Right.
Well, there are, I mean, there's a reason we do May bond elections on a three year cycle. Um, one, it's a good practice to keep investing in your community. Um, two, it's an off election year in regards to city council, uh, positions. Um, and that, and that really is important because you don't want. Long term investment decisions in your community to be influenced by, um, politics. Um, but, you know, if we decide that May is not it, it could be November of twenty twenty one. Um, because that is, you know, the next opportunity. Um, and you certainly, um, could get, uh, you know, a, a, a larger turnout of voting. In a November, am I right? Am I thinking correctly?
Correct, yes.
After skip May would be ju- uh, November.
It would be November, okay, um, you certainly get a larger turnout and more of the community making a decision and the investment of their community. Um, I, I just personally don't like November municipal elections for city council positions. Because it becomes a partisan discussion when city, uh, election shouldn't be partisan. Um, but I think a bond, an item on a, you know, a bond item on a, on a ballot is different. That is allowing your, you know, larger community base to make a decision. And I don't think there's anything negative about that. Um, and, you know, it, it is possible, I mean, we haven't, I don't think we've talked about this. It's possible we put thirty six point six million on the May, um, election. For infrastructure, public safety and, um.
Parks and rec.
And we look at November of twenty twenty one for a facility, uh, decision. You know, so there's lots of different scenarios here. Um, I, I hear some of you saying you don't want to make, I think I'm hearing you saying you don't want to make this thirty six point six million dollar decision or. Whatever that number is without knowing the facilities piece, but we all know. What facilities need to be done, and that needs going to be out there regardless of whether it's voted in on May or November. Or the following May or the following November, so all those needs are, are out there, so. Um, just kind of some other thoughts to think about, Whitney?
And I think one of the, the difficulties with that, Mayor, is that. Um, no matter which building is first, it would take a significant amount. Um, out of the thirty six million. Um, and which, which really, going back to, uh, Brian Galardi's point. Um, is that really the best use for that first chunk of money, that first thirty six million? Or should that be a separate effort of its own, and so I think there's some of those decisions that have to be made. I know that, um, C I B has a lot of work to do, uh, Jeff. Uh, between now and, and the time that you've got to make recommendations to the. Back to the council on your, your rankings, because rankings really haven't even started. And you've also got to do orientation for quite a few of you new members.
That's correct.
Rode up to speed on, on where we are, so, um. I, I, I'm not running your meeting, but I, I believe you're gonna need more than just one or two meetings to get that done. Um, between now and, and probably December when you, uh. Uh, when Brian gave us kind of that soft deadline of when we have to have things back, so. Um, I, I don't, I think my personal opinion is, is that throwing the facilities piece. Into the job that you already have to do between now and December would kill the effectiveness of your project. Um, because I don't believe that, that, that's really going to be beneficial to what you need to be able to do. To give us the best recommendations possible for this thir- the thirty six million. So, and that's just my gut, because I don't think you're gonna have enough of, of the type of information that you want by then to make those decisions. Going back to what Matt was saying, um, you know, we need to have that timeline, we need to have. That whole picture with the facilities piece, and I, and my gut is telling me that we may not have that right away. So, um, I, I think that, that in my, my opinion, one of seven votes. But my opinion would be that, Jeff, you should concentrate on what you already have in your bucket. And not try to put anything, eh, anything else into it, so that you're giving us the best rankings you can. Um, on the, the, uh, those three pieces that you already have.
Whitney, I, I agree with you, uh, entirely, and the only thing that I would suggest to, um, the C I A board meeting. Meet members is that you take advantage of viewing the presentation from the. Consultant on the municipal facilities that took place, um. With the council, and Laura's going to forward the information to you about the date that that took place. The other thing is to, if you have the opportunity, and please do take the opportunity to review. The materials from, the, it's actually the rankings from the three departments. So that we'll be able to talk knowledgeably about, uh. Ranking for ourselves, uh, and what we might be able to suggest to the, the council. So those, those are the two things that I ask, uh, the C I A B members to do at this time. Uh, so that we'll be prepared come November to talk about it knowledgeably.
So, do, I'm gonna ask, uh, any C I A B members, any questions, comments, thoughts? For those of you that haven't.
I, I got a question about the eight May versus November, um, so earlier and the discussion of bond capacity. There's a lot of, uh, concern about the, uh, twenty twenty one tax values. Uh, because there's a lot of economic uncertainty right now. Um, it would seem to me that, uh, in terms of the facilities. Um, if we defer a decision about any kind of bond for facility, for the facilities until November. We would have a much better idea about our actual capacity. Is there an opportunity for a supplemental bond just for facilities outside of the twenty twenty one bond? If we find out that we're in a better economic scenario than what our consultants have provided for us in giving us this thirty six point six million?
Well, that, well, that's what I was saying is we could, we could do it in, uh, November also, but, uh, we get our assessments by when, Brian, Whitney?
Mayor, we, we generally get, um, our first assess, uh, first preliminary in April, which everybody. The appraisal districts always tell you, please ignore, and then they give you the one in May. And the one in May is, we can generally give a little bit better idea of where it's gonna end up. That did not work this year, as you well know, um, just too much uncertainty, but. He, here's one thing I, I will tell you guys on, on this, if, if we have the election in May. Then, um, then you would sell your first set of bonds that summer, which is next summer. And it counts towards your tax rate for that following year. If we wait till November, we will skip an entire budget year, um, for the bo- um, for the bonds, uh. So, uh, that's not to say that that's the wrong answer, that's not to say it's, it's the end of the world. Um, you know, the mayor may have hit on something I hadn't really thought about is, you know, maybe there would be some value. In, uh, focusing on a, a smaller amount that, you know, for roads and, and, and alleys and parks and stuff like that. And then come back in November with a, a bigger issue, and maybe that's a way to bridge the gap, um, with facilities that way too, so. Um, so we, there's lots of different ways we can, we can go around this.
But I, I would just encourage you all at the C I A B to focus on what you're looking at right now, prioritize those. Um, and, and you know, just really focus on that area. Um, any other Noel or Victor or Micah or Yvonne or Mike, or am I missing anybody? Any questions or comments y'all have?
Hey, Mike, you're muted.
Um, I just wanna, um, say that, uh, I, I, I completely, um. Agree with, uh, Whitney about, uh, C I A B having multiple meetings before, you know. To catch up on stuff and orientation and whatnot before we actually come up in. Uh, the timeframe that Brian actually gave us to come up with those, uh, recommendations, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yeah, feel like you're drinking out of a fire hose right now?
I'm trying to grasp it, I'm trying to grasp it, I will.
Mike, go ahead.
So Laura, do we, um, record any of the meetings that we've had?
No, we do not, just the minutes. Um, Mike, did you?
Yeah, can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, yeah, I had a question, so if we defer or separate out the facilities. And I'm assuming, you know, consolidating new buildings, that kind of stuff. Uh, do we have any responsibility for the May bond? Uh, for the existing facilities, any costs there? Uh, just to keep the, keep the lights on in the building, you know, operational?
You know, I, I think that falls under maintenance as opposed to a twenty year bond. Um, because we certainly don't want to make an investment in our current facilities that are, has a twenty year life, but, um. I'll see if I'm speaking out of turn with Brian.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, it's a good question, Mike, thank you, um, you know, Matt kind of touched on that a little while, uh, earlier. You know, I, I think that there, there are some possibilities for the city, they, if you think about this, that it could take. You know, four or even five bond cycles, fifteen years maybe, to build the buildings we need to build. Um, it could be that, that we have to play the, you know, we have, we have to move around the pieces. For a bit of time, and so instead of twenty year bonds, to the mayor's point, you know, there may be some shorter term debt structure we would do. For renovations too, but I, so I'll give you just one example, you know, like, for example, if we built the public safety facility first. And we move the city hall campus into the existing facility, we might need several million dollars to get it up and running. But you wouldn't want to finance that for twenty years, and so, um, that would be some of the, the possibilities that we could consider. If we, if we kind of shift around some things and, um, just simply because you're not gonna be able to do it all. In three years, six years, or even maybe even nine years.
Okay, so in our ranking, outside of the facilities question, we don't need to consider any of that in our priorities. That's what I hear.
I, I wouldn't right now.
That's my understanding, Mike.
I, I think there's too many unknowns right now for y'all to do that.
Correct, so we'll work with what we have, um. And I hope everybody, uh, does a little self education here with regard to the projects that are currently pres- presented to the, uh, the board.
Martha, I saw you raise your hand earlier, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, encourage you to, um, look at your schedules. And see if maybe you could have at least one additional meeting, uh, for orientation for those guys. Having served on, on, uh, both of the previous bond, um, committees. Eh, either as a member or council liaison, uh, there is a lot to take in. In a very short amount of time for you guys, and, um, and so to, to that point. I, I think it could really help particularly your new members if, if y'all could possibly squeeze in. Uh, another meeting to familiarize them with the process.
Brian Galardi?
I would, I would echo that, actually, we have a note down to talk to Jeff about that later, but I think it's gonna require more than just one additional meeting. I did a quick napkin calculation, if we spend ten minutes talking about and deciding each of the forty four items. We're gonna spend seven and a half hours trying to get these forty four items prioritized. I suspect we're gonna talk longer than ten minutes about quite a number of them.
Yeah, but you know what? You only got thirty six point six to start talking about, you may go up to forty, you may go up to fifty, you're gonna go up to something bigger than that. But you don't have to, those that are on the bottom of the list of public works that are at the hundred and fifty six, you know, million. I wouldn't spend a lot of time prioritizing those right now, right?
No, there's no need, you're absolutely right, Tammy.
So, you're, I think your, your calculations are based on all of them on the list, and maybe you'd. So you're, I think your your calculations are based on all of them on the list and maybe you need to.
And I'm and I'm, that's being very generous at ten minutes per item, so.
Right, right.
If we get up to a half hour per item, then then, you know, three times that just to get through that list or.
You guys will decide, Jeff and Whitney and all of you, but you know, maybe you first look at the first ten items on everybody's list and you move, see if you go any deeper, you know, whatever that number.
Well, I think the the key is what Martha was saying, that is that um we need to bring our our new members up to speed on the ranking criteria. And um my thought was that we each individually need to go through those ranking criteria for those projects individually. I know Jeff, you wanna do it as a a group discussion to reach the final decision, but. I think we all have to go through and score everything before we get together in that meeting or we're gonna be in that meeting for three days.
Okay, um.
Alright.
Alright.
Anything else, anybody? Did we meet all our objectives, Brian, Whitney, Jeff?
Mayor, you met mine, the 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 one thing that I um kind of came back to is, you know, we were kind of throwing out some possibilities, but I can't give them the facilities. Instead of just saying, you know, forty, sixty, ninety, whatever the numbers would be. It, I would recommend that the CIAB just prioritize uh those projects and and maybe add a number. And like I said, total, you know, and maybe it's, I let's say eighty million dollars, so we know what to do with the first forty or fifty. Um whereas if you stopped at forty million dollars and and we wanted to go further, it would be a lot harder, so. May- maybe we just set a target for, you know, that you prioritize up to the first, I don't know, eighty million dollars or so.
Okay, we can do that, Brian. Um now, uh with regard to the criteria, uh I think. Tell me whether or not, uh I'm just addressing the members of the CIAB, does everybody get the three ring binder with the criteria in them? Mike, uh Micah, uh Brian, I think you should have, I don't know about Neil and Yvonne?
The new members have not, Jeff, that was an in person thing, well, I'll get it digitized and sent to them.
If you would, please, uh so that you have the, each of the ranking criteria and the details with regard to each one of those criteria. I think it's very important for you to understand uh what each of those contains and so that the ranking has some meaning. Okay, uh because there are some things, the environment uh. Is not a consideration and 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 some things, uh public safety is the primary consideration. Um so you'll have an idea of how to rank it uh from one to or zero to ten. Uh and that's, that's the way that we'll handle this. Okay, uh and then I'll talk with Whitney and Laura about scheduling an additional meeting. Probably uh a week or two prior to the November meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and it'll ideally, it'll be on a Monday, the same as we have uh usually um the first Monday of the month, so. Look for a message about the next meeting for the CIAB.
I just have one very important, one more very important uh statement, and that is, Jeff Sheldon, your background makes me sleepy.
I'm in orbit.
Very calming, but it also is like.
Okay.
Alright, anybody else anything? Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, yeah, for everything you're about to go through.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it.
The board meeting for the CIAB is adjourned.
And we are adjourned as the city council.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow night. Good night, everybody.